All right, are we all ready? Is Jennifer right there? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 9th, 2021 work session of Forsyth County Board of Education. If you'll arise for their pledge of allegiance. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Any changes to attend to?
No recommended changes.
Wes, do you want to add the homeless thing on there? The for the?
I can do that.
Okay. So we have an agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Tom?
Second.
Second by Darla. All in favor? That's unanimous. First up for presentation and discussion is the 2022-23 elementary redistricting. Ms. Chung?
Good evening. Okay, after considering feedback that will be received from our online platform as well as the public forum that was held on October 18th, we have made an adjustment to the redistricting map for the 2022-2023 school year. The original lines that we had drawn and presented to you did not include phases two and three of the Brookmead subdivision. So after further analysis of that, those lines were redrawn so that the entirety of the neighborhood now and future phases would be districted for New Hope. That was the only significant line changes. We did have some feedback, though, and I'd like to address some of that for clarification and read these things into the record. Several of the questions centered around the start time. For New Hope, New Hope will be a tier one or an early start time for two basic reasons. As New Hope Elementary School sits on the same road as Whitlow Elementary School, and Whitlow is a tier two or a late start time, it helps to alleviate traffic concerns by New Hope starting on the earlier tier rather than at the same time as Whitlow. So that was the first reason. The second reason really is tied to the burden that we'd be putting on the Transportation Department. The later time requires that more buses be on the road because you have other schools also starting at that time at the high school level, and that makes it much more difficult in trying to find substitute drivers, which, as we've seen this year, is a, you know, significant shortage. And so that is a burden that we can take off of transportation as well as alleviate the traffic concerns that we had. So that's why New Hope will be an early start time. Question came up about programming. All of the required programs, just want to assure everybody that things like our special education services, 504, gifted services, all those basic programs that every elementary school has in our system will be available at New Hope. The school is designed to have STEM and robotics programs as well, and we'll make sure next time if we don't have it now, the video that links to Ms. Webb's presentation is there if she goes through all those details very clearly. Question came up about staffing. Providing high-quality teachers is the main priority for both Big Creek and New Hope's principals, as well as our Human Resources Department. The quality instructors that make up the staffs at our existing schools will be a large part of the faculty that makes their way over to New Hope and to the growing faculty at Big Creek. So as the students shift to a different school, also the high-quality teachers will be shifting to other schools. As our system has grown each year, we've been blessed to attract outstanding teachers from other school systems as well, and we also have recently graduated talent coming in from teacher programs, and we've just been blessed from year to year to be able to attract a lot of that talent from all around, and we don't see that changing next year. In every redistricting, the neighborhoods at the farthest ends of the lines are generally the ones that are most concerned in terms of driving distance. We have to kind of keep this in mind, though, whenever we do a redistricting and kindly share this with our families out there, that populating new schools, relieving the overpopulated existing schools, and populating underpopulated schools are the main priorities. That's really combined for priority one. While geography is always a factor, it's really one of many factors that go into this, and it's not the primary factor. The primary factor is making sure we balance our populations. As we always hear, there's desires that people put in there to move to other existing schools. One that came up on a few occasions in the feedback was Shiloh Point Elementary School. This, in fact, was one of the schools that we project next year would be at 114% capacity without New Hope opening. So that's a school that we really targeted to relieve overcrowding, and certainly the idea of adding folks from one existing school to that defeats the purpose of what this year's redistricting was. So we will not be moving folks into Shiloh Point Elementary this year. Another one that came up pretty frequently is that all rising fifth graders who have been redistricted will be allowed to complete an out-of-district waiver application and so that they can stay behind at their current school if they've been there their whole career. We're not going to make them move their fifth grade year if they don't want to. Just to be reminded, though, families need to be reminded that if they are granted that out-of-district waiver, they have to provide their own transportation. Siblings of the fifth grader will allow to go with their siblings to their existing school for one year. Once that fifth grader, that oldest one, has gotten through, then next year they'll have to go to their newly districted school. The only exception to this traditional redistricting guideline that I've just gone through with you would be at the folks who are moving from Brandywine to Big Creek. We have a handful of students that have been redistricted, eight, I think, in total, students that are a part of the dual-language immersion program, the DLI program that's at Brandywine. And so if we have students that are currently enrolled in this program at Brandywine that have been moved to Big Creek, we will allow them to stay behind and continue. They made a commitment to us to be in that program, and so as part of that commitment back, we've worked with transportation, and that will be provided to them until such a time as they complete the program.
And we've done that before.
And we have, yep. Yep. All right. So with all that being said, the changes we put in and a chance to kind of go through the feedback, I know that not everyone is always excited about changing schools, but these are going to be two fabulous schools that we're asking students to move to. We feel really good about the experiences that they'll get there, and I, at this time, would respectfully submit for your consideration for approval of these proposed lines.
I was just saying, obviously, this will stay out there for a week so the public can hear what Mr. Young had to say tonight, and then we'll come back for a formal vote next Tuesday night. And so if you have anything that you want us to look at between now and then, obviously, the sooner you let us know, the better so we can go back and take a look.
All right, we'd just like to step through a few more of the comments.
Sure.
Mr. Young went through the generalizations. We all, as board members, we've read through all the comments that came in through the survey, and we've all read through them. I just wanted to highlight a few more of the subdivisions that had some comments through. Ms. Young commented on Brookmead that was touched on. Castle Brook, which is made up of Davis Farms, Hanson Farms, and Silver Stream. There was several questions on there about whether they were staying, and it can be hard to look at the map when you look at it online, and they are staying at Whitlow. So there were several people that asked about that, and they are staying at Whitlow. Providence Plantation, there were several people in there that had asked to stay at Shiloh Point for a variety of reasons. And even though there are a small number of students in that subdivision, they're in the middle of the map, and we can't just carve out one subdivision and have the schools or the subdivisions around them go to the different school. That just would not work for transportation. So in the past, if it's a small subdivision on the edge and the numbers don't really matter, we've been able to look at it, but not when they're in the middle of the map. We can't just carve it out. Stonehaven Point was another subdivision that wasn't clear from the map. They are staying at Whitlow, so I think they were happy about that. Traditions, there was several comments from that subdivision, and that was one of the subdivisions. We had comments from both angles. Some people wanted to stay, some people wanted to go. There was several subdivisions where we had people from both sides of the fence, concerned about traffic, early start, but they will be in the new school. And Whitfield was another one who had a mix of concerns, and, Ms. Young, you already touched on them, several robotics, fifth graders, transportation. So you've touched on those in general. So a lot of the comments were clarified, and I think we've covered that. Some of the other ones about Brandywine and Big Creek, one of the comments from the Winrose people off of Christopher Robbins, again, a kind of similar topic as it was with Providence. With Winrose, it's a subdivision in the middle of several others, and we can't just move one subdivision because you have to look at all the ones around that on that street, and if you move one, you have to move several. And moving them to, say, into Brookwood Elementary, they're under capacity as well, and if we start moving that around, we can't play with numbers. So I think that covers it, so.
Okay. And one of the things I would say, too, is with the passing of SPOX six and the proposal, if these lines are approved, you know, we'll start thinking staff-wise about SPOX six in the construction of the new Midway. And the hope is that with that construction, we'll be able to alleviate some of the other schools. I know in some of the feedback we got talked about overcrowding in other schools, and we really believe that Midway will help us with a lot of those problems as well.
I think this is good timing, too, for Shiloh Point to get this relief because there's a lot of construction going on across the street from Shiloh along the Ronald Reagan area. So I think this could have been built and open in a better time. So overall, this is one of the least amount of comments we've ever come, received in a survey, and the fewest people we've ever had at a public forum. So good job with the staff on drawing the lines and good job on getting this information out.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to the next topic, then, which is the 2022-23 school calendar.
Okay. Well, again, after considering the feedback we received on this, and we got a lot, and we've got it from the community, of course, we got it from local school councils and school administrators from our cabinet. So we went through a variety of versions of this, and what I put up on the screen is our proposal for the 2023-2024 school year. Confusion on some of that feedback. This is not next year, this is a couple of years down the road. So let me just very quickly go through. I know a couple of meetings ago, we showed our proposed calendar. We have made, as a result of the feedback from our community, a lot of significant changes to that, and I want to quickly go through that with you. I'll sort of, I think this is somewhat chronologically, although I bounce around a little bit, but I do want to say the last day of each semester now, the last day of first semester, the last day of second semester, will be early release days. This allows time for the closing out of business, cleaning up of classrooms, reviewing the accuracy of finalizing grade reports and so forth. And so that was a suggestion that was made, again, several times, that we went ahead and made that adjustment. We had two early release days. Traditionally, we've had two early release days in October, in the middle of October, for K through eighth-grade parent conferences. We've eliminated the two half-days and instead are going to have a single online learning day on October 19th. This was one, again, if you looked through the feedback, it came through very, very clear, what we're going to do on this online learning day, and again, this is K8 only, but this will be an asynchronous online learning day slash parent conference day. And so this allows a couple of things. In doing this, we're only disrupting families two days that week. The Friday is a, the 20th is a professional learning day that's traditionally been held on that. But instead of Wednesday and Thursday being a disruption, we now just have Thursday, Friday of that. So we're cutting down the disruption for families there. This also opens up time slots for morning conferences. They've always been just afternoon conferences. We think this should give more flexibility to families to get in and meet with their teachers. And it really gives the kindergarten through eighth-grade classes, their teachers and students, an experience with online learning days, which is great having lived through this at the high school level. It's great to have a run through that, to know what everybody's doing and whose technology is working and not working in the event that you have a shutdown or a snow day or an inclement weather day where you have to flex to that. And having one in October gives everybody a chance to really experience that and work out the bugs. The next day that was an adjustment day, and this was one that was loud and clear from our staff and our administrators throughout the county, is we originally had teachers returning to work and staff returning to work on January 2nd. That poses a real strain on staff and families to travel the day after New Year's. Most people, they go out of town, they would travel on January 2nd. This way, we've eliminated that. They're going to have the second now as a vacation day, and we'll have a professional learning day on January 3rd. We have made December 20th, which doesn't impact the students, but we have made December 20th now a professional learning day. That would have been on January 2nd. We moved that up to December 20th. Again, that gives them some professional time to prepare for the next semester, to close out the current semester that they're in. And again, that did not impact the start time for the student vacation. So it does impact the teachers, but the trade-off was that day in January. When you look over at March, we moved the March 7th kindergarten through 12th grade early release day for parent conferences to March 14th. This moves it further from the February holiday and places it at the end of the nine-week grading period instead of a day 38 or 39. This puts it right up to day 44 or 45, which is a better breaking point for grades and to have better conversations with families in those conferences. And then the subsequent professional learning day, which was on March 8th, we now have moved that to March 15th for the same reasons I mentioned in the last date. And then finally, for clarity, we are highlighting this year the early release days that are just high school exam days. High schools have midterms and final exams. They've traditionally had these as early release days, but we didn't have them on the calendar. That's caused some confusion for parents, and we think by going ahead and putting that up front on the calendar now, but the hope is, is that they're reading closely and looking at the color code to make sure they know that's high school only on those days. And I've been assured that they'll look at that, and this will save confusion rather than cause confusion. So with these changes, I'll leave it to any questions you may have, but if not, then I would respectfully submit this to you for your consideration and approval.
And once again, just like redistricting, this will be voted on next week, and if you have any questions or comments as you peruse it, let us know as soon as possible.
I like the early release before the holidays because we've heard from staff that there's so much checking out of students throughout the day that it's very disruptive to the classroom and the front office staff are just, it's all they're doing.
Yeah.
So let everybody just go because that's what they're going to do anyway.
It's a revolving door on those days if families want to get a jump start. But our feeling is, and what we saw at the end of the school year, is if you give them a half-day, you're more likely to have a solid group of kids show up and stay for the half-day, you know, as opposed to
A day I can pack at home.
The barrage of checkouts, yeah. Yep, good point.
Good work on that.
Yeah, I think I mentioned to you earlier that it's kind of like a Rubik's Cube, right? Like when I look at this. So I just appreciate all your work on it, the intentionality and taking everyone's feedback, you know, staff and parents and really, I think this is really great. So thank you.
That's a good analogy.
Absolutely. Again, I'm presenting it, but a lot of talks with LeAnn Rice and her directors in teaching, learning, and principals, and there's a lot of, as you, there's a lot of hands on this Rubik's Cube.
Yes.
So, yep.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is the HR and Human Resources update with Dr. Solon.
No, I haven't checked World Series dates yet. We'll see what happens.
It was rough this year.
It was.
Good afternoon, everybody. I want to tell you a little bit about your Forsyth County family. As you know, our byline is connecting dreams to success, and so we recruit to connect people to the dream jobs that they'd like to have, and then we support them through success so that they'll stay with us and we can retain them. Obviously, we always support your goals, and we try to be as efficient and effective as we possibly can. And so that is our, as we work on allotments and staffing and that kind of thing, we always keep this in mind. You have a total of 7,317 family members as of October 20th. That goes a long way. This number is a little larger than what I usually present to you because I usually present to you in September, and we don't go through October. But at this point, that's how many you have. Certified staff, all certified staff, 3,837. Classified, and of course, as you well know, that's everybody from pair pros to bus drivers to food service, custodians, maintenance, anybody that doesn't have a certificate, 1,954. And the other 1,526 are things, are people like after-school workers, substitute teachers, lay coaches, people like that. But they are a member of our family, too. This is what the last couple of three years have looked like. As you see, we grow. We always grow, it seems like. We grow more students, and so therefore we grow more staff. In 2020, we had a total of 5630. Then we grew to 5654, and this year we're at 5791. You can see that the blue is our certified staff, and they grew, they grow each year. And the green is our classified staff. We had a little bit of a dip last year, and that was, again, due to COVID and that kind of thing, all, just the remainders of that, and, but we're back up again this year with our classified staff, and we are still looking for classified staff, everybody from custodians to food service workers to pair pros. We're still needing those. This is a summary of your new staff. So since June 1st, we have processed 1,011 people to hire. That includes 380 substitutes that we have new this year. Our certified hires are 368, and I'm proud to tell you that 34 of those are pair pros who have been converted to teachers. We have some great people who are pair pros, and they become teachers with us, knowing what the classroom is like, and they make wonderful teachers. Our school administration, we have eight new principal assignments, six new principals to the role, and one new school, which is New Hope Elementary. We have 36 new assistant principal assignments this year, 21 new people to the role, and 15 new to the building or the district. Our certified hire assignments, as you see, we have 135 elementary, we have 140 secondary teachers. Support positions are those like, for example, in the central office, Kimberly Bennett would be one of those as an example. Our special ed, as you well know, is a great need and a good number of our certified hires, and we have 45 in elementary and 41 in the secondary level. Here is the breakdown of our new hires' experience. Less than five years or less, 57% of our new hires. Six to 10 years, 17%. 11 to 15 years, 10%. 16 to 20, 8%. And 20-plus years, 8%. So whether they are a first-year teacher or a 20 or more, we are hiring them.
I just want to comment on that for a second. There are a lot of school systems that, when they have openings, really focus on hiring teachers at the beginning of the salary schedule and experienced teachers. Our mantra here is always to hire the best candidate, and so we budget accordingly. Larry does. So if the best candidate happens to be someone at the top of the teaching scale, that's who we're going to offer the job to. We certainly don't go at it from the perspective of we're going to hire the least expensive employee. We want to hire the best employee.
And we have a good reputation, and so people of all levels of experience want to come and work here. Our hiring statistics, as you know, our college and university makes up 24%, and I have to tell you that University of North Georgia, we hire the most from them, as all other colleges combined. And so we have a wonderful partnership there, and we really depend on them. Out of state, 12%. Other Georgia districts, 30%, and that, again, is our neighbors, Gwinnett and Fulton. Former substitutes and parists who now have come to work with us is 20%. And then the other is, are people, 14% are people that we didn't really come from out of state. They might have graduated, but they took a break year, and then they're coming to work. So we really can't tell where they came from exactly, but 14% of our hires come from somewhere else and maybe out of, in the corporate world and have transitioned into the teaching career. And I do have to say, our pair pros and our substitutes are just great people to come to work with us. As you all know, diversity is one of those things that we like to work on and recruit. And the reason we do that is because we know that statistically, if our students see an adult in the building that is the same ethnicity as them, they do better. And so we do work on diversity in recruiting diversified staff. We are making some movement in that way. I have to tell you that I'm always, we haven't gotten there yet, to say the least, but in the year 2018-19, we, our workforce was 95% white, non-Hispanic, and we had less than 1% Asian or black and only 3% Hispanic. As of this moment, this year, we have 2% black, 1% Asian, 4% Hispanic, and 93% white, non-Hispanic. So we are moving it, and we are looking for, and we're going and visiting colleges and universities everywhere in the hopes that we can attract more diverse staff to our family.
Let me also add to that comment. Cindy, if you go back to that slide, again, same thing I said earlier, we're always hiring the best candidate. We do recruit and encourage minority candidates to consider applying for jobs in Forsyth County, and we've been very successful with that. Obviously, when you have more minority candidates apply, the likelihood that you're going to hire more minority candidates is a reality, but the bottom line is we always hire, once again, the best candidate regardless of race or ethnicity.
This is our retention rate. As you can see, this year, this past year, 2021, it was 95.7. That is higher than 2016, 17, 18, and 19. A little lower than 2020, but I would like to submit to you that as COVID was an anomaly in every area, and this was another one of those, with the pandemic unemployment assistance program, we had people who were staying in a job, and then they made a decision later, like, for example, to retire, that kind of thing. So it looks like it dropped down a little bit, but if you compare it to the rest of life, it is still an increase in our certified retention.
I think we had a lot of people retire. Don't you think?
I was just going to say, that's a number to be incredibly proud of, to have that. And I know, Tom, you worked in HR for years. To have a retention rate of over 95% is very impressive, no matter what industry you work in.
I know that this time of life, it feels like we're losing a lot of people, but we aren't overall. We really aren't. We're keeping our good folks. Why do new Forsyth teachers return? We ask the ones at the end of their first year every year, why do they come back? You will see on the left side of the pie chart, support is a huge reason that people return here to work, whether it's an administrative support or their colleague's support. So when you put that together, that's almost 50% of the reason people remain here, which tells you, again, that Forsyth County Schools is a great place to work. Support of parents is 6%, and what that means is you, we, our parents support the education in this, in our system. And so we have people who come from other places that it's not that way, and so they like being here and they stay because of that. Salary and benefits, 7%. Quality of education is 22%, and that means that they know that we have quality in the classroom. So even if you're a teacher, you're going to be expected to do a quality job. They like that. They like that challenge. And they also know that when they come here, their children are going to get a quality education. Proximity to home is 14%, and other is 4%. Separations, all over the chart. We are proud that we don't have that much in the five or less is less, 20% is less separations at that level than last year, and we like that because if we can keep them into that six, seven, eight, nine, 10 year, we often keep them for the rest of their career because they become vested in our retirement, and it works well for us. The over 20%, you know, it's, that is retirements and that kind of thing. So, and, you know, it's not, separations aren't always bad. Sometimes we like to think of it that way, but if you move, if you start a new career, stay home with children, there are all kinds of reasons to leave us that aren't necessarily a bad reason, and retirement being one of those. So that's it for our family. Have you got any questions of me? We've got a great family.
Look forward to that summary every year. It's good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have draft 2021-22 draft legislative priorities with Jennifer Crotchelo.
Good afternoon. It's hard to believe it's that time of year to get our priorities together for the legislative session. I felt like we just started school maybe a few weeks ago. So what I did is I took your legislative priorities from last year and added a few additions. I added about providing state funding for one school nurse per year. We know, especially after everything we've gone through this year with the pandemic. We know, especially after everything we've gone through this year with a pandemic, what's been on a nurse's plate, and those are locally funded positions. So we would like to request to our state delegation to work with us on possibly providing some state funding for those positions, not just for the pandemic, but also everything that our nurses are dealing with, given the size of our schools. And then I also added, too, to recruiting and retaining teachers, that we would encourage our local delegation to promote changes to allow districts to utilize retired educators full-time in high-need teaching positions. You know, subs is one area that we've been working on to try to build our sub base, but if we were able to bring back our highly qualified Forsyth retirees to come back into some special areas, that would just benefit our schools and also our students as well. And then under supporting the state and local partnership, in addition, for consideration is to consider the CARES Act funding inequities while they're preparing the state budget for next year. Are there, I'm going to leave these with you, and of course, if you have any changes or recommendations over the next week, please feel free to contact me, and I'll come back next week for approval. Any questions?
Thank you for adding that one bullet.
Okay. Thanks.
Anybody have any ideas or thoughts for future addenda items?
I just wanted to comment publicly how much we appreciate our citizens' support on SPOSS six. You know, the fact that we had 69% vote affirmative is a huge number, especially in light of the fact there were some folks that were very vocally opposed to the SPOSS. The 69%, it's one of the highest percentage passages we've had in the history of Forsyth County schools, and I think it shows that the majority of our citizens are incredibly supportive of the work that we're doing and the children that we serve. And, you know, our pledge is to use that funding, as is said, in our goals as efficiently and effectively as possible. We have a lot of work that needs to be done, as you guys know, behind the scenes, a lot of lifecycle equipment and things like that that we have to address, and then obviously the building of the new Midway Elementary School will be part of it. And the good news, and I know we've said this several times throughout the fall, is we just do not see in the foreseeable future the need for another bond for our community, which, you know, with SPOSS dollars, you're not paying interest. It's, you know, pay-as-you-go projects, which is really a smart way to take care of so much-needed enhancements in our school system. So thank you to the citizens of Forsyth County for once again supporting our school system.
All right. And is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel and land for the affidavit?
So moved.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
By Lindsey. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you all.
[inaudible]